Welcome all of you to the May 20th, 2019 County Commission Meeting. Happy to have all of our guests with us and when you have an opportunity, please come back and visit us again. This time, I'd like to introduce Commissioner Kenny Rich for our prayer and pledge tonight.
The night I've asked Pastor Jeff Pratt, pastor at Emmanuel Baptist Church, if he would come and have our prayer tonight before we start.
Please rise.
Thank you Kenny. Kenny said I could say something, so I'm gonna say something. You know, one of the things that I'll remind myself every day is the business that I'm in. It's easy for me as a pastor to get caught up in numbers and programs and buildings, but at the end of the day, I'm in the people business. That's what the Lord has called me to do. And I want to remind you Commissioners, as you do what you do, you're in the people business. I know you deal with a lot of issues and a lot of policies and procedures, but at the end of the day, you represent people. And I think if we keep that in the forefront of our minds, we'll serve them well. So let me pray for you. Father, we're grateful for this opportunity this evening. Thank you so much, Lord, for allowing me to come to this group of men and women who represent people in this county. Father, I thank you that you have placed government in its place, and Lord, it is ordained by you. So Father, we know that these people sitting in these seats are here because of you and your hand, Lord, and your direction. So Father, I pray that as they represent their constituents, as they represent the people that voted them into this place, Lord, that you would give them your wisdom, that they would follow your principles, and that they would realize that truth lies not in a document, but in a person named Jesus Christ. So Father, in all that we do, let us lift you up, let our lives be for your glory, Lord, knowing that we are stewards of this place we call earth. And Lord, in that, the decisions that we make can affect that. So Father, as these men and women lead us, let them lead us well as they follow your leadership in Jesus' name. Amen.
Would press yes on your panel to record your presence at tonight's meeting? Twenty present, five absent. Report from the Steering Committee. Commissioner Patton.
The Steering Committee met Thursday, May 9th. Conference room upstairs. The minisitting.
Your motion to approve? Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye. Opposed? Thank you. Option of the agenda? Mr. Patton. Let's adopt the agenda first if we can. There's a second. Your second? Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye. Opposed? And now the consent agenda has three items in it. One establishes speed limit on old travel lane, two twenty, twenty-five miles per hour. Two line item transfers, one to the county clerk and one to the veteran service office. Your motion to approve?
No motion.
Second? Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye. Got a wrong call because it has money in it, so please, if you are ready to vote, please vote. And Commissioner Patton, would you vote, please? It's not there because it's being used in the back. Please record. Twenty yes and five absent, resolution passes. Special recognition at this time, I'd like to ask all of our Teachers of the Year candidates, if you would, please to come forward and stand along the front, if you would, and Commissioner Gentry, you would come forward with the resolution. All my Teacher of the Year folks. We thank you so much for what you do for our educational system in the county. Commissioner John Gentry will read our resolution.
Good evening, it's my distinct honor to recognize these teachers. I was training as well to be a teacher, a mathematics teacher, but Uncle Sam called and I never really did it, so I'm gonna read the resolution. There are twenty-nine teachers involved. Of course, we don't have them all here, some are graduations. Resolution of the Board of County Commissioners of Wilson County, Tennessee, honoring the nominees for the 2018-19 Wilson County Teacher of the Year. Wilson County and its citizens are fortunate to have two outstanding educational systems, as well as choices for private education. And the administration, faculty, and staff of each school is committed to providing a first-class education and learning experience for the students. And each year, the administration and faculty of each student nominate teachers for Wilson County Teacher of the Year, and each teacher is honored at a banquet on their behalf, at which time, one of the nominees is selected as Wilson County Teacher of the Year. Now, I have some of the teachers up here, I'm not going to attempt to say their names, and when I'm finished, they will introduce themselves and I'll hand them a certificate. This year, Derek Southworth of Lebanon High School was selected as the Wilson County Teacher of the Year. Now therefore, be it resolved by the Board of County Commissioners of Wilson County, Tennessee, that we hereby recognize the outstanding dedication and commitment of each of these teachers to their profession and to their students, and congratulate them on being the nominee for their school for Wilson County Teacher of the Year. Be it further resolved that we bestow special recognition on Derek Southworth of Lebanon High School for his selection at the Wilson County Teacher of the Year. Be it further resolved that the copy of this resolution be presented to the principal of each school represented for display in their school. Now, I'm gonna ask each teacher to introduce themselves, and I will present a copy of this resolution to each one of you.
Yeah, the school and the grade.
Hi, my name is Allison Ashley, and I teach second grade at Sam Houston Elementary
I'm Robert Slavage, Stoner Creek Elementary, in special education.
Hello, I'm Connie Cannon, first grade, buyer's daddy.
Hello, my name is Paige Henley, I'm at Castle Heights Elementary. I'm a Title I interventionist in reading, teaching kindergarten through fifth grade
Hi, I'm Laurie Gateline, I teach second grade at Global Elementary.
Hi, I'm Alicia Sober, I teach fifth grade at Coles Ferry Elementary.
Hello, I am Shannon Queen, eighth grade, American History, Watertown Middle School.
Hello, I'm Brooke Carr, and I teach special ed at Springdale Elementary.
Good evening, I'm Beth Davis, I teach at Mount Juliet Christian Academy, I teach band, and I'm the fine arts director, grades fifth through twelve right now.
Hi, I'm Lauren Knatzler, I teach first grade at Watertown Elementary.
Richard Lewis, physics and chemistry, Wilson Central High School.
Your motion to approve? All in favor, say aye. Thank you all, and congratulations to you. I will tell you that the Commissioner of Stafford Education could not be here tonight because her grandson was graduating from Lebanon High School. She did say this was the first time that she'd missed since 1998, she wanted that in a minute, she was not under oath when she said that, so I'm hoping that's true. But again, thank you all for what you do in our school system. We acknowledge also at this time, our Superintendent, Dr. Wright, also was Superintendent of the Year to my knowledge, and congratulations to her. Again, you guys in this commission room have done an outstanding job of supporting your teachers and educational system, and they do an outstanding job day in and day out. So we thank y'all for taking your time to be here tonight. I'd be remiss to not recognize the best university in the county of Wilson. Dr. Paul Stumm and his wife are here, glad to have you with us tonight, Dr. Stumm. At this time, Commissioner Glover has a special recognition.
Anyone here with the Lebanon High School girls' basketball team?
Lebanon High School graduation, I'm sure that's where they're at.
Well, I talked to the coach today, and he said he's gonna try to get, let him were there to support the graduates.
Pull it till next month.
Oh, we're getting the copies and so they get it to him before they leave for the summer. Resolution of the Board of County Commissioners of Wilson County, Tennessee, honoring the nineteen, 2019 Lebanon Blue Double Lads basketball team. Eleven high school double ladies basketball team finished this season with an overall season record of twenty-five wins and eleven losses, the most wins in twenty-nine years. This team of talented young women made their first T double S double A state tournament Elite Eight appearance since thirty-seven years ago. On their way to the state tournament in Murfreesboro, they were district nine triple A runners-up, region five triple A champions, and sectional champions, and the senior members of the team were Kristani Brookshire, I'm gonna mess up all these names, I'm glad they're not here. Jakisha James, Ekorona Saverson, maybe I should do the last names. The junior members were Ms. Brown, Ms. Freeman, Ms. Hutterbrack, Ms. Lester, Ms. Malaski. Sophomore members were Mrs. Harris, Mrs. Makas, may I correct you there? Lost my place there. Ms. Porter, Ms. Wilson. The freshmen were Ms. Barr, Ms. Crowder, Ms. Danko, Ms. Dickerson, Ms. Mason, Ms. Rankins, Ms. Reynolds, Ms. Stewart, and the team was coached by Koi Barrett and Ms. Hyatt, Sam Freeman, Iceland McCarver, Kay Maynard, and others who played a vital role for this team in the championship included trainer Jacob Woodard and managers Maddie Roselton and Sarah Porter. Therefore, be it resolved by the Board of County Commissioners of Wilson County, Tennessee, that this resolution be presented to the head coach Cory Barrett, each member of the team and coaching staff, and the support staff at Lebanon Double Lads Basketball for Display at Lebanon High School, in recognition of the outstanding and historic season of the Lebanon Double Lads Ladies Basketball Team.
Motion to approve?
No motion.
All in favor, say aye. Thank you Commissioner Glover, and athletics is a large part of the educational institution and program, and so thank you for recognizing them and their achievements this year. This time, I'd like to call Commissioner McFarland to come forward. And I would also like to tell you that on the first of May, we declared that the month of May would be ALS Awareness Month. That was brought to our attention by Commissioner McFarland, which was brought to his attention by Ms. Jenny Bennett. And we had several members that we know of in our community that we called up here, we could have called more, for example, I know Ms. Fanata has been affected by this disease as well, and her family, and so we didn't get everybody in, but next year, we'll do a better job of that. But we did want to bring awareness to ALS Month, and Robert had shined the light side here in recognition of them, and now Commissioner McFarland has a special presentation for us tonight.
Thank you Mayor. This resolution honoring Brian Wayne Galatin, if you will come forward, Brian, you and
Brian, we're glad to have you with us today.
We're faming you, sir, so I need you right here. You're a good fifth district voter, I appreciate you. Would you come right here, please? All right, come in, take the camera back here if you would, please, sir. This is the resolution. Resolution of the Board of County Commissioners of Wilson County, Tennessee, honoring singer-songwriter Brian Wayne. Whereas Brian Wayne is a native of Vienna, Virginia, came to Nashville in 1994, finding success in the music, country music industry. Whereas songwriter Brian, Brian has written many songs, Tommy Shane Steiner hit, What If She's An Angel, which reached number two in the country music singles chart in 2002. Whereas Brian has received BMI Millionaire Award, an accomplishment achieved only by fifteen hundred songs out of the four point five million songs in the BMI catalog at the time. Whereas, he scored a top twenty-five single with Chris Cagle's Country, The Grace of God, and wrote Kick My Backside for Big &amp; Rich, triple platinum certified debut album, Horse of a Different Color. Whereas Brian, who has a wife and two sons, was diagnosed with ALS, commonly known as leukoarytis disease. Now, to come to terms with this diagnosis, a heartbreaking prognosis, Brian's mind turned to his wife and two sons, but also to the music and to, whereas Brian, with his unwavering optimism and musical craftsmanship, developed a plan and began recording his upcoming album, looking for songs that contact, that connect, I'm sorry, songs that connect and songs that would allow him to interact with those who face their own challenges and those who wrote a song with deeper and positive meaning. But mostly, he wanted to provide his family with an eternal piece of his heart and sound of his voice on music. Whereas, the result was While You Wait, quote unquote, released in November 2018, with the lead singer being known simply, simply as Semphire, co-written by Brian, John Rich, Big Kenny. And whereas, from this, Brian's message is to try my best not to make a single second, not to take a single second for granted, a better appreciation for my wife, my sons, and family, my friends, and life in general, and to take this opportunity to remind friends and family how fleeting life is, and how important it is to appreciate every second. Now therefore, be it resolved by the Board of County Commissioners of Wilson County, Tennessee, that we hereby honor Brian Wayne for his dedication and commitment, congratulate him on success, he and his life to this date, and encourage him as he faces his life battle while spreading the message of, quote, doing your best and not taking a single second for granted. Signed to this date, Jerry McFarland, Commissioner District Five, Randall Hutto, Mayor of Wilson County. Brian, I present this to you, sir. Somebody back there is photographing you. And now, we have a second presentation. If you'll pay attention to this door, we'll now have first row music, we'll make a second presentation of Mr. Brian Wayne. Come right in, sir.
Hear ye, hear ye, hear ye, hear ye. Dear us Brian and Galentine family, congratulations. Your family and friends love you very much, so much so that they helped you get selected by the Front Row Foundation to go see Broadway's Hamilton. On June 8th, Brian, Stacy, Grayson, and Bennett will see Hamilton in New York City. The Front Row has plans to give your family many unforgettable memories and magical moments. Get ready to pack your bags, memorize those Hamilton songs, and start your NYC adventure in just three weeks. We are so excited for you and your family, and can't wait to welcome you into the Front Row way of life. Your new extended family, the Front Row Foundation.
Thank you everybody, thank the Front Row, thank you Jerry, Jenny Bennett, all our friends and family back there, hi. As everyone said, ALS is, May is ALS Awareness Month, it's gonna take away my ability to eat, talk, move, and breathe, so I appreciate everybody learning more about this disease and helping us find a cure. Thank you.
Thank you Brian.
Well, I thank you for your inspiration, being here, and I know you just got out of hospital a day ago. And so we thank you so much for being here. Commissioner McFarland, thank you for bringing this to our attention. This and Pastor Pratt's prayer at the very beginning brings life to reality. Your motion to approve that, please? All in favor, say aye. Thank you. This time, Commissioner Glover, EMS week proclamation. Thank all of our guests for being here as well.
Proclamation of the Wilson County Mayor Designated the Week of May 19th through the 25th as a Emergency Medical Service Week. Emergency medical service is a vital public service, and the members of the emergency medical service teams are ready to provide life-saving care for those in need 24 hours a day, seven days a week. Access to quality emergency care dramatically improves the survival and recovery rate of those who experience sudden illness or injury, and the emergency medical service has grown to fill a gap by providing important out-of-hospital care, including preventive medicine, follow-up care, and access to telemedicine. The emergency medical service system consists of first responders, emergency medical technicians, paramedics, emergency medical dispatchers, firefighters, police officers, educators, administrators, pre-hospital nurses, emergency nurses, emergency physicians, trained members of the public, and other out-of-hospital medical care providers. The members of the emergency medical service teams, whether career or volunteer, engage in thousands of hours of specialized training and continuing education to enhance their life-saving skills. It is appropriate to recognize the value and accomplishments of emergency medical service providers by Designated Emergency Medical Service Week. Now, Randall Hutto, Mayor of Wilson County, Tennessee, in recognition of this event, do hereby proclaim the Week of May 19th through the 25th, 2019, as Emergency Medical Service Week, with the theme EMS Strong, Stronger Together. I encourage the community to observe this week with appropriate programs, ceremonies, and activities.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye. Commissioner Ash. George Cooper, thank you so much for what you do in leading our team, and I know it was also Sheriff Brian is here, and I'm assuming he'll talk about also another special week in law enforcement this month as well. Reports from the Minutes Committee. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye. Opposed? Reading of the minutes?
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? At this time, I would like to ask Ms. Amy if she would come forward, and you'd like to bring your team with you, you're welcome to.
Yeah.
Glad it's good for them to be recognized.
Ladies, thank you.
Ms. Teresa, do you have this under control right now? We have no need for it, or do we have a need for it until we get ready to talk? Are you using that?
No.
You can help me get hooked up, please?
So, the tourism department has been doing some really strong initiatives over the last twelve months that we would like to report back on. For those of you who haven't met the full team, this is our newest member, Crystal Pettit. She is our admin assistant, and she also does a lot of special projects for us. And Ashley Shores, who is our digital marketing specialist, and we'll get into some of her work and the results from, since she's been starting these digital marketing campaigns. So we are nearing the end of the fiscal year, but in the last twelve months, the tourism department has achieved a rebranding initiative to Visit Wilco, Tennessee, a website redesign with a blog, a partner login, a full directory of events, restaurants, shopping, hotels, and attractions, an email campaign capability, social media marketing campaign with targeted ads on Facebook and Instagram. In partnership with the Peg Channel, a mini-series, Wilco on the Go, was created for social media platforms. We created a photography database with marketing photos of Wilson County, initiated a search engine marketing geared towards Google and Bing users for the leisure market, as well as initiated a search engine marketing initiative geared towards meeting planners, trade shows, associations, and group organizations. We created marketing collateral such as visitor's guides, dining guides, shopping guides, attraction guides, a meeting planner packet which is at your desk in front of you, as well as a Wilco group discount card that will go to the BMW group that's coming down soon, as well as some of our larger events and groups. As a result of these marketing initiatives, we wanted to present you with some of our year-over-year numbers that we're really excited about. Our hotel occupancy rates year-over-year have increased by nine point three percent. Our hotel supply has increased by five point one percent. Our hotel demand has increased by fourteen point nine percent. And the most astonishing of these numbers is our hotel revenue. April of 2017, our revenue was right around eight million dollars. April of 2018, eight point two million dollars, and after a year of marketing initiatives, this April, it's at nine point two million dollars. So we grew a million dollars in hotel revenue, thanks to a lot of the work that these ladies do, and we do thank you for your support of tourism. These numbers are going to help us reach our goal of getting into the top ten counties in Tennessee for the economic impact of tourism. Right now, we are number thirteen. If we achieve that goal, that's an additional sixty million dollars of economic impact into our community, and an additional two million dollars for our county to use in tax dollars. So we are on track to hit this goal, it's a five-year goal, so we do appreciate all of your support. We've had over two million digital impressions in the past twelve months, and our website traffic has increased by a hundred and fifty percent. So the marketing initiatives are working, and I have an awesome team here that's helping us with these initiatives, and I just couldn't be more proud of these numbers. Our competitor analysis is also in your packet. Our Wilson County occupancy percent change from March 2018 to March 2019 was nine point three percent. Sumner County was six point four percent. Rutherford County was point six percent, and Davidson County was two point four percent. So we are doing extremely well compared to our competitors. And our competitor analysis, budget-wise, our tourism budget is three hundred and thirty-one thousand, Sumner's five hundred and sixty thousand, Rutherford is seven sixty-six thousand, and Williamson County is one point two million. So considering the results that we're seeing with a fraction of the budget, we are so proud to be able to give the county a real bang for their buck. So some of our upcoming projects that we're working on is a county mural campaign to create more Instagrammable moments for residents and visitors alike to enhance our social media presence. We are working on a major bid for a sporting, sports tourism event here in the county. We are currently bidding on two festivals to come into the Ag Center and the Expo Center grounds, and the creation of a countywide comic book convention, Wilco Adventure Con. We are currently creating sizzle videos for our county to showcase to showcase on social media and our website, as well as in this next fiscal year, we will be expanding our digital marketing dollars using geovencing technology to really pinpoint our target markets throughout the country. And last but not least, we have formed a Wilson County Hotel Forum. We meet once a month with our hotel partners. It's been very successful. And we are very happy to say we are working this summer on providing some human trafficking courses that our hotel partners will participate in. Because, yes, of course, we are about, you know, providing economic impacts for our community, but it's also about making our community a better place. So we are really excited to be able to offer that to our hotel partners. So thank you all for your support for tourism. And if you ever have any questions, please let me know. And thank you so much to my amazing team who helps us achieve all of these results. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Amy. Any questions for Ms. Amy? Officer Kurtz, I know you had an opportunity to witness their presentation at the Rotary Club. Any comments?
You know, and I sent the email, and it won't say everybody, but I was impressed with Amy's enthusiasm. If you could not tell how excited she is about Wilson County. She's more excited than most of you all sitting in here that grew up here. So it just goes to say that where we invest our dollars is gonna be a bitter return. Rotary, if any of y'all ever been in the Rotary Club, we were there about 20 minutes longer than we normally are, and nobody got up and left, nobody complained, and everybody asked questions. So I think that goes without saying how good a job she did. And I thank them in the running for a program of the course.
Thank you.
Thank you, Officer Kurtz. And Amy, thank you and your team for coming and just sharing with us. We appreciate that. This time, Ms. Teresa Bush has a presentation.
Uh, well, I did, but now we don't have that, so Martin, but it's on. No, he's not got it. I'll see, I can always see it.
That was what I was asking a while ago, if you had something hooked up. She couldn't get to it. You did not?
No, I didn't.
If you want to show something on it right now.
I was going to, but it's all right, they can do it. No, it's not been plugged up because I knew that you wouldn't do that. So I don't know why that happened. I don't know why that happened. Why, why did it?
Hello, everybody. I wanted to kind of officially make reference to the fact that we are the ones operating Charter Spectrum Channel 198, which for many years was run by the city of Lebanon. So it's kind of hard to have a ribbon cutting for a television station, a channel. We could come over and hang out in the studio, but we wouldn't fit in there. But in a few years, when we get our big one right, Mayor, we'll all be able to fit in there, so. Amy, yeah, there we go. Just want to clarify a couple of things. It is Charter 198. It is AT&amp;T 99. We are working with the cable companies in the western side of the county, which are Comcast and TDS. The law does not require that a company, a cable company, give us a channel unless they are in literally the street of where you, from where you're broadcasting. So they don't have to give us one. But we're working with them for some technology to do that. We do stream 24/7. So if you go to the county's website, there's a little TV there. I think most people know. And you click on the TV, and you can see it from there. So you're able to see the programming. I get asked a lot, what's on your channel? In addition to county commission meetings, our budget education meetings, our live with the city of Lebanon, we're getting Mount Juliet's meetings. I get programming from other public education government, or PEG for short, channels across the country. And I program it like a television station. You're going to see kids programming in the morning. You're gonna see some exercise shows, some cooking shows, and then the shows that we produce locally. Talking With Tatum, a 30-minute talk show. Walking Through Wilson, which is three segments of Something Interesting, a community affair show. As Amy mentioned earlier, our Wilco On The Go, just talking about some fun things to do here. So we're meeting our requirements that the cable companies require us to do to do that. So I encourage you to watch and look, and tell me what you like, tell me what you don't like. One of the things I wanted to show you is if you'll go to our page, we're under the About tab on the county's website. It's Wilson County Television. There's a place where you can click and see the schedule. The schedule will be in real time. So I have a lot of folks to call and say, "Well, when's the Talking With Tatum with Chris Dowell gonna be on there?" And when's the Talking With Tatum with Mike Kurtz gonna be on? Or Matt Farland, who else have we done? Miss Patton, and so on. So you can go there, and there's a search bar. You can type in whatever the word. If you want to type in Wilco, or Amy Nichols, or Dowell, or whatever, and it'll come up, and it will show you. Please come by and take a look at the studio. I also would be remiss if I did not mention the wonderful and talented high school students that I have just, you know, been overwhelmed. They teach me a lot. I teach them a few things. But I'd like to mention the ones who are here tonight. Dakota Russ, Alex Neal, Alex Pulley has helped us. Kyle Pulley is here. Seth Sanders is here. Hayden McAnally, Lyndon White. Who am I leaving out? There was one lady that I'm leaving out from Mount Juliet, and Mr. Peach down there. I'm so sorry. He'll just have to, he'll just have to get aggravated at me because I can't think of their name. But anyway, these guys are great. They're wonderful shooters and editors, and really couldn't do what I have done without them. If I could, it would have just taken a lot longer. So things will progress a lot faster with them. So thank you all for allowing this to happen. I think it's something that everybody can benefit. Please give me your ideas at any time. Go to our page. You can send a comment there, call me. I'm talking to the people at home. Y'all have my phone numbers. But please let me know what you like, what you don't like, what you'd like to see. And thank you very much.
Mr. Gentry?
When we first started this PEG channel, we talked about advertisements, and maybe making some money for the county. Does that mean...
You can, you can get sponsors. You think of PBS or MPT. There are people, for example, let's say, I mean, a foundation might be able to do that. Let's say there's the John Gentry Foundation, and you'd like to see something on alcoholism, a show about alcoholism prevention, or opioid, or whatever. And so that foundation could make it available for us to produce that show. So they would be the sponsor of that show.
But we haven't done any of it yet, though. We don't have any paid advertisements yet.
I really don't want to use the word paid advertisement because that is illegal on PEG channels. So it would be a sponsorship.
Oh, sponsors.
Yes, sir. Advertisement is illegal.
We don't have that yet.
No, sir. No, sir. We would have sponsorships or underwriters, like what you see on PBS. "The following show was brought to you by a kind donation by Bridgestone Americas." So that is possible, absolutely. And it would be for programs that we don't already produce.
Can we go out and solicit those?
We can do that, absolutely. Absolutely.
Any other questions today?
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bush. And thank you for the work that you're doing. People are really enjoying the educational part that we're receiving there, that you and your team are getting together for. So thank you for what you do there. I know tonight's kind of a ribbon cutting for you. This was, I guess, for the record, didn't have anything to do with Commissioner Gentry's after-hour activity that we talked about. I will let you know during my time, during my time, that on May the 9th was National Children's Mental Awareness Day that we proclaimed here and had a proclamation read about that. Also, that Ms. Ann Chapman has been reappointed to the Global Utility District. And I would like to take just a moment to say something in honor of Mayor Bob Dedman. They just passed away, that was here for 12 years and did an outstanding job, not only here, but in the property assessor's office. And he will be truly missed, was an icon in this community, got a lot of things done. Definitely things behind the scenes that a lot of times, you know, you just don't see until somebody leaves office, and you go back and you look at their heritage. So my thanks to him, my sadness to their family. And then also, as mentioned earlier, about Mr. Bedford Johnson. And he was back, he was here when they called it civil defense, I believe. And it goes back in the day, and, you know, really had a chance to talk to him, son. We worked on a fire hall together out in Commissioner Ash's district in Noreen. And I know we had the fire hall, I believe, named after him, to my, best of my knowledge. And so just really a great man, and we want to honor him and thank his family this time. And I would also be remiss with Mr. David Hale, someone that you know very well. His father passed away, and he's also been a large part of our WEMA organization, as well as 911 now. But I want to think about him during this time as well. I do appreciate the job that you do. And I hope you know that as we think about different things that have happened already tonight here. You know, your job is not a one-day-a-month job, as we've talked about that. And so I appreciate what you do and the way you continue to push our county forward. Yesterday, I had a chance to, you know, this is the life, I think, as Amy talked about it just a second. There's so many things going on in Wilson County. We had to run for the wall with the bikers that stopped, that came through this country and stopped here at our Veterans Memorial, and talked about how that was this afternoon. Me and Mike, today, were at lunch up at a creamery being started at Shop Springs by the Turners. There are a lot of different things that are happening here. And so again, it goes back, these Teachers of the Year. All of it starts right here, and so I appreciate what you do and the time that you put in and dedication to this county. I thank you for that. This time, we'll move forward, and we have elections and appointments. Mr. Goodall, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, Ms. Van Aden?
Mayor, I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
Have you worked on a timeline for a budget workshop? Are we doing that again this year?
Yes, ma'am. And if you look in that packet that I sent out, and I'll resend it out to everybody, but it is already in there for that timeline. We put that date in there. Yes, ma'am. So we will have that. It'll be right after we get our... No problem. It's, we have a week of viewing the education budgets when it gets done, and then we'll come back. And Erin is doing that on Thursday, I believe, in that calendar. But I'll resend it just in case. Good question. Anything else? Mr. Goodall, any names to be added to the notary list? Okay. Are you motion to approve the notaries? Second, any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye. Opposed? Okay. You have five members to be, I'll serve a two-year term, and I'd like to recommend you for the Beer Board. Ms. Sherri Hyder, Mr. Allen Major, Mr. Ken Davis, Mr. Jay Watt, and Mr. Wayne Beadle. They do not have to be drinkers to be on this board, by the way. But I would ask you to motion to approve those. Thought I'd get a laugh out of that. All in favor, say aye. Ask for my own last, I think, not Mr. Jennings. White group. E91, I have three members. You are to confirm my appointment for E91, if you can choose to do so. They're to serve four-year terms upon your confirmation. I'd like to appoint Commissioner Terry Ash, Mr. Fred Burton, and Mr. Jordan Beasley.
Motion to approve.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye. Opposed? Get me out now. Education and Health Facility Board, there are two members. You are to appoint two members to the Health and Education Facility Board for a six-year term. I'd like to recommend Ms. Tina Winfrey and Mr. Todd Tressler, Sr. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye. Opposed? Emergency Management Director's Report, I'm sorry, Report for Management Committee. Mr. Glover, thank you. And Emergency Management Director's Report, Director Cooper.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, County Commission. In your packet, you'll see our run call volume for the month of April. Would like to say we are 111 calls above last month, and this month is actually gonna be probably even more. We have seen an increase in call volume. As you can see on the activity list, we have been very busy this month. I have been in a lot of classes, especially this month. And most of those are better to represent you and the citizens. With that, I do like one class that I'm taking at the end of the month to get my Emergency Management Advanced Professionalism Development certification. So it's classes that I want to take and classes that will benefit the citizens overall. As stated earlier, also, we were honored to participate in four funerals in the last two weeks. Those being Mayor Dedman, Mr. Gene Hale, and also retired Chief Bedford Johnson. I was hired in under Chief Johnson back in 1989. I've always appreciated him and learned a lot from him. We were very honored to be able to represent the family during that time. Also, I want to mention retired Lieutenant Albert Malone from Watertown. He passed away last week, and we participated in that also for the family. Outside of that, that concludes my report.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye. Opposed? Thank you, Director Cooper. Report from Law Enforcement Committee, Commissioner Rich.
Mr. Chairman, the Commission of Law Enforcement Committee met on May the 7th at the Federal Department of Justice Center in Plano. We have minutes on questions I recommend we be seated upon.
Second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye. Opposed? Your support, Sheriff Brian. Sheriff Brian, I had a chance to go out to Tucker's Crossroads today and honor a man of 18 years. Great program they had with him.
Yes, it was. It was, it was good to see them honor him as Officer SRO at Tucker's Crossroad. He's not retiring, he's just moving to another division at his request. Moving to Court Division, hardly him to walk around them hallways anymore. They are in day, and it was a, glad to see what they...
Students lined up down the hall, and they brought him from the library as a surprise. And it was really a great thing, Tucker Crossroads.
Your reports in your packet, some of the numbers that look, that I'm looking at is the state warrants received and the civil process warrants received, and actually, the number we've served. So the numbers are high. Again, I'll say it again, the jail, 489 was the highest last month. We, I come in this morning, there was 508 inmates in that jail. And it's just, we get some out, and more come back in. The work crews are out working every day. If you look at the roads, it's been worked this past month. We're trying to get out there before the road commission comes down to throw it with their bushhogs. So don't blow it everywhere, you know. So, but we are picking up a bunch of trash. And if you have any that you need attention, call me, I'll get it done. The garden is in, we put 587 tomato plants out this past week. I ain't gonna tell you where it is, okay? But it's right over here behind us. If you see anybody besides inmates, call me, I can get them out. We caught somebody in it stealing our tomatoes last year. But we're gonna have two gardens over here and another one out 231 South. And hopefully, you did plant it probably this week. So that saves a little bit of money in that food cost, as you see. And actually, inmates actually enjoy it. It's good, it's homegrown food, so. The week of May 15th, as the mayor was speaking of a while ago, was National Police Week. The week before last, on a Thursday, we was able to have a local service here and we honored all the ones we've lost in this county over the years. And it's a sad week, and Commissioner Ash knows what I'm talking about. And it's, these men and women are putting their life on the line every day, and I can't say enough about them. It's just respectful. But in saying that, that ends my report, unless there's any questions.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye. Department of Education Committee, Commissioner Bernard.
Thank you, Mayor. The Education Committee met Thursday, May 9th, at 5:30 upstairs here in the courthouse. I make a motion to approve the minutes.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye. Opposed? This time, the Director of Schools report. The Director of Schools is with 11 high school graduates. Mr. Hall is here to answer any questions. And I'll need a motion to approve the report in your packet unless we have some questions.
Motion to approve the report.
Questions for Mr. Hall? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye. Opposed? Would like to point out that I did not call his name back when we were scrambling. I worry about this voting machine being up. And Erin Wilson is in the back. He is with the IT department now. He's the guy that got up and got his joints. Erin, thank you for taking care of it. And he'll give us some work together to make that happen. So thank you all for what you do. This time, report from the Public Works Committee, Commissioner Weathers. Act Center Management, Commissioner Rich.
Act Management, reading. I've got three minutes in the packet. One was on April the 23rd, the other was on May the 7th. Such new questions, I'm hoping these people will see them by.
Second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye. Opposed? Animal Control, Commissioner McFarlane.
No, of course.
Audit, Commissioner Bernard.
Audit report, or Audit Committee met April twenty-fifth on a Thursday here at five thirty upstairs in the courthouse. I make a motion these minutes be approved.
Any discussion? Do you not all in favor, say aye. Opposed? Cable Tax, Commissioner Walker.
Yes, sir. Mayor, the telecommission of the Cable TV Committee met on Tuesday, April ninth at sixteen, the upstairs conference room. I know these minutes will be soon.
Any discussion? Do you not all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Animal Tourism, Commissioner Van Adams.
And animal tourism, that on Tuesday, April the ninth, at five thirty, the conference room, and I'd like to echo, um, the comments about the tourism department. The excitement in this office is amazing, and I know several commissioners up in there and networked out and talked to them, and I've heard all of them said a few minutes ago, Tom, make it approve, and see what we're doing, it's exciting. I was by on there in Wilson County, working with her, the chambers, the Act Center and Action Center, like you said, are amazing, I was by on there.
Thank you for the motion, and I do second.
Second.
Any discussion? Do you not all in favor, say aye. Opposed? Ethics, Commissioner Ash.
Audit report.
Finance, Commissioner Gentry.
Finance Committee met on Thursday, April twenty-fifth at six o'clock in the upstairs room. I made a motion to be approved.
Any discussion? Do you not all in favor, say aye. Opposed? Health and Recreation, Commissioner Patton.
Audit report.
Insurance, Commissioner Ash.
Audit report.
Judicial, Commissioner Glover.
Audit report.
Planning and Zoning, Commissioner McFarlane.
Planning and Zoning Committee met June, May the seventh, at the M, and it's in fact really big, they buy.
Second. Any discussion? Do you not all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Rules, Commissioner Gentry.
Audit report.
Urban Type Facility, Commissioner Rich.
Uh, Urban Type Facility, board that on May the third, at the local mission office, uh, mentioned in the package, and most of the business.
Back up. Any discussion? Do you not all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Finance Director's report, Mr. Aaron Maynor. We'll tell you tonight, we do have five people that are absent, and they have called. Commissioner Keating, along with Weathers, and with, during your prayers. Commissioner Scrugg is on another assignment. Commissioner Marlowe, Commissioner Stafford is on education assignment, as you well know, and Commissioner Robinson is on education assignment for the road commission. Mr. Maynor?
Yeah, finance report is in your packet, I don't have a whole lot to say about that. The budget worksheets are, the last of them are coming in this week, so for the June Budget Committee meeting, we should have the status quo budgets, and hopefully all, or at least most of the needs for you at that point. At that point, we'll be able to distribute those. Probably the most important thing that I have to talk to you about this evening is a potential refunding opportunity for the Lebanon High School bond. I laid a sheet of paper on your desk, it's like this, just hope to see that there's, there's two columns there, there's a, there's an old debt service out almost to the far right, and then right in the middle of the page, there's a new debt service. So if we were to refund these bonds' projection, we would go from total payments of fifty-seven, or new debt service would be fifty-seven, fifty-seven point five million, the old debt service was almost sixty-one million, so there's potentially a savings to be had here of almost three point four million dollars, and that is after cost of issuance. Mr. Mackinault, he's here tonight, if you have any questions for him, but this certainly looks like a good opportunity to me to, to do a refunding and create, create a little capacity in the fund, so unless you have any other questions for me, that concludes my report.
A motion to approve the report?
A motion.
Second.
Second.
Commissioner Gentry?
I understand what you said, potentially over three million, what does that mean? You could possibly get less than that?
You could possibly get more.
Or maybe more.
Or less. I mean, basically, it's going to depend on how the market moves between now and the time that we, we do our bids, we do our bond sales by competitive sale, which basically means we advertise, and we're going to open bids at nine o'clock on June fifteenth, and at nine o'clock on June fifteenth, we get institutional investors.
They'll bid.
Bid. Now, right now, the way it's looking, we would, we would probably, I believe, what Mr. Mackinault told me was, we would, could conceivably get a rate of around two and a half percent, which is considerably better than, than what we, what we have on the other bonds. Plus, they would be going, one of the reasons it'd be a better interest rate is these would, these were Build America bonds, which were taxable bonds, is when they were issued, so we'll be going from a taxable to a non-taxable bond, to a muni bond, yes.
Thank you, Rick.
Yes. Mr. Walker?
Could you explain briefly the rate we're getting on this money and compare it to most recent issuance on the high school bond?
Um, Mr. Walker, I, I want to say, you, you may remember this better than I do, but it was, was it over three and a half? On the last one that we got, maybe three seven, something like that? I can't, I can't remember for sure. Again, if I could predict the market, I wouldn't be here. I would, I would be living in Vegas off of, off of my investments. You know, we went through a period of time where the Fed was going to raise rates, you know, five times in the next twelve months, and it certainly appeared that that was, that was happening, and then all of a sudden, you know, things have cooled off to a certain degree. I don't know all the reasons behind that. All I know is when you get into one of these opportunities, timing is of the essence, and I will say that just because you guys approve a plan of refunding or approve the refunding resolution, if we don't like what we see when we go out to bid, we just back off. You know, we, we do have the opportunity not to go through with the issue, you know, even after we, we open the bids, so I will point that out, if we don't like what we see at that point in time, then we just walk away.
I have one question, sir. Are all of the bonds we issued callable?
All of them have a call provision usually built in about ten years.
That's right.
Yeah.
Is that how we were able to call these?
Yeah, these bonds were issued in two thousand and ten, so they're callable, there's a small portion, if you, if you look at the schedule that I gave you, there is a existing debt service of two million, six hundred and seventeen thousand, five hundred. That's basically the portion that's non-callable.
It's non-callable.
Yeah.
So they're not all?
No, there's a small, there's one, one year basically out there that's not, not called.
So you're not insured either?
When you say they're not, you say they're not insured?
Insured, we don't, we don't insure them for the people to buy it anyway.
Our, all of our bonds are insured a hundred percent by the full faith and credit of Wilson County Government in this body.
Okay.
Mr. Kirk?
Thank you, Mayor, just wanted to let the commission know, the Lebanon Special Squad, we just did the same thing, and one of our bonds, and we were, the initial amount we were told was eight hundred, nine hundred thousand, and we ended up, it's closer to one point five million.
Yeah, and we, we.
We had an increase from that time, so, and didn't, did extend the length of the debt, it was the same, was that?
Absolutely, yeah, let me make that, make that clear. Anytime I bring you a, a refunding, it is never, ever extending the term of the debt. If it ever is, I will tell you, so, so this is the exact same term as what you've already got.
Any other questions? I'll thank you, Mr. Maynor. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Department of Safety Committee, Mr. Glover.
We met in regular session on Thursday, May ninth, six thirty, upstairs conference room. I want you to be seated.
Second. Any discussion? Do you not all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Mr. Glover? He comes forward, just, two things of housekeeping for me. On Tuesday at six o'clock, I got a judicial committee, and just by show of hand, Commissioner Glover, you will chair that for me, and Commissioner Gentry, will you be there?
Yes.
Okay, and Commissioner Kirk, will you be there?
Yes.
And Commissioner Ash, will you be there?
Okay.
And the last one would be Public Works on Thursday. Commissioner Weathers, will you chair that one for me?
Yes, sir.
Okay, and Commissioner Jones, will you be there on Thursday? Ms. Cindy, will you be there? Okay, and Mr. Walker, will you be there? Okay. Commissioner Patton? And Commissioner Marlowe? Thank you.
Nineteen five seven, President of the Board of County Commissioners of Wilson County, Tennessee, amend the uniform, amend their property taxes, center program policies and procedures.
Motion to approve. Second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Resolution passes.
Nineteen five eight, Resolution of the Board of County Commissioners of Wilson County, Tennessee, accept an A grant on the two thousand and nineteen, two thousand and twenty litter grant program, and authorizing the county mayor to execute a contract between the State Tennessee Department of Transportation and Wilson County, Tennessee.
Motion to approve. Second. Any discussion? See you none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
There, you messed me up.
Sorry.
Okay. Please cast your vote for the litter grant. All hearts and minds good with your vote? Please record.
Yes, five ahs, and resolution passes.
Nineteen five nine, Resolution of the Board of County Commissioners of Wilson County to amend the budget appropriation resolution for the two thousand and eighteen, nineteen fiscal year to make line item transfers in Animal Control.
Motion to second, now any discussion? Do you not, are you ready to vote? Please cast your vote. All hearts and minds good with your vote?
Please record.
Yes, five ahs, and resolution passes.
Nineteen five ten, Resolution of the Board of County Commissioners of Wilson County to amend the budget appropriation resolution for the two thousand and eighteen, nineteen fiscal year to correct previous budget amendment entries for tasers.
Any discussion? Do you not, are you ready to vote? Please cast your vote. Mr. Weathers, Mr. Walker. All hearts and minds good with your vote? Please record. Yes, five ahs, and resolution passes.
Nineteen five eleven, Resolution of the Board of County Commissioners of Wilson County, Tennessee, to amend the budget appropriation resolution for the two thousand and eighteen, nineteen fiscal year and to make line item transfers in the Sheriff's Department.
Motion to approve. Second. Any discussion? Do you not, are you ready to vote? Please cast your vote. All hearts and minds good with your vote? Please record. Yes, five ahs, and resolution passes.
What was the correction? Nineteen five twelve, Resolution of the Board of County Commissioners of Wilson County to amend the budget appropriation resolution for the two thousand and eighteen, two thousand and nineteen fiscal year to make line, line item transfers in the Sheriff's Department and to make an additional appropriation to the Sheriff's Department.
Motion to approve. Second. Any discussion? Do you not, are you ready to vote? Please cast your vote. All hearts and minds good with your vote? Please record.
Yes.
Yes, five ahs, and resolution passes.
Nineteen five thirteen, Resolution of the Board of County Commissioners of Wilson County to amend the budget appropriation resolution for the two thousand and eighteen, nineteen fiscal year and to make line item transfers in the Sheriff's Department.
Motion to approve. Second. Motion to second, now discussion? Do you not, are you ready to vote? Please cast your vote.
Yes.
All hearts and minds good with your vote? Please record.
Yes.
Yes, five ahs, and resolution passes.
Nineteen five fourteen, Resolution of the Board of County Commissioners of Wilson County, Tennessee, amend the budget appropriation resolution for two thousand and eighteen, nineteen fiscal year and to make an additional appropriation in the Act Center fine to the Exwell Center.
Any discussion? Do you not, are you ready to vote? Please cast your vote. All hearts and minds good with your vote? Please record. Yes, five ahs, and resolution passes.
Nineteen five fifteen, Resolution of the Board of County Commissioners of Wilson County to amend the budget and appropriation resolution for the two thousand and eighteen, nineteen fiscal year by approving Wilson County Board of Education general purpose school fine budget amendment two thousand and nineteen dash zero four.
Any discussion? Do you not, are you ready to vote? Please cast your vote. All hearts and minds good with your vote? Please record. Yes, five ahs, and resolution passes.
Nineteen five sixteen, Resolution of the Board of County Commissioner of Wilson County, Tennessee, to amend the budget and appropriation resolution for the two thousand and eighteen, nineteen fiscal year, approving Wilson County Board of Education Central Cafeteria Fine Budget Amendment two thousand and nineteen dash zero five.
Any discussion? Do you not, ready to vote? Please cast your vote. All hearts and minds good with your vote? Please record.
Yes.
Yes, five ahs, and resolution passes.
Nineteen five seventeen, Resolution of the Board of County Commissioners of Wilson County, Tennessee, to amend the budget appropriation resolution for the two thousand and eighteen, nineteen fiscal year transfer fines until the general debt service.
Any discussion? Do you not, are you ready to vote? Please cast your vote. All hearts and minds good with your vote? Please record. Yes, five ahs, and resolution passes.
Nineteen five eighteen, Resolution authorizing the insurance, insurance, sale and payment of general obligation refunding bonds of Wilson County, Tennessee, in the principal amount of approximately forty-seven point seven eight five million, and providing for the levy of taxes for the payment of debt services on the bonds.
I got a motion to second, now discussion? Do you not, are you ready to vote? Please cast your vote. All hearts and minds good with your vote? Please record. Yes, five ahs, and resolution passes. Glover? Any old business at this time to come before this body? Any new business? Time I need a motion to go out of session for public hearing. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Mr. Tom, tonight, is on an educational assignment as well, and so Mr. Jennings will be filling in for Mr. Sherr.
Tom asked me to do this, so I'll be led to do that, and congratulations to Tom, and congratulations, Mr. Chow. Notice of public hearing, a public hearing will be held before the Wilson County Commission on Monday, May twenty, two thousand and nineteen, at seven o'clock PM or thereafter in the county commission room of the Wilson County Courthouse located at two twenty-eight East Main Street, Lebanon, Tennessee. To be considered, application submitted by Russell Thompson to rezon property from R one rural residential to C three highway commercial. The rezoning of property will extend zoning of existing three, C three highway commercial zone property located at Central Pike and Murfreesboro Road, referenced by Wilson County Tax Route one twenty-three, being part of parcel twenty. The property contains approximately twelve point two five acres. Copy of this request is on file in the Wilson County Planning Commission at two twenty-eight East Main Street, and is available for inspection during regular business hours. Anyone desiring to comment is requested to attend.
This time, anyone wishing to speak against this property or for this property, now speak, if they have a chance, uh, bet your name and address for the record, if anyone wishes to speak on the property. Do you not, we'll close public comment period, I'll take a motion to go back into session.
Go back in.
Motion to second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Commissioner Ash?
I make a motion to approve this property.
I'm happy to offer to approve these properties. It's a good use plan, and it's in the area.
Motion is second. Mayor, you read anything about the property?
I'll just tell you, came with the buzzing recommendation from Wilson County.
See, Commissioner Jones's district, and you're good, because you second it. So, any other discussion? If you're not, all in favor, say aye. Opposed? Anything else to come before this body, if you're not? If not, I need one more motion. All in favor, say aye.